Welcome to our board meeting. Mr. Weber, if you could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Demacia. Mr. Fowles.
President.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
And it is time we have the Pledge of Allegiance and...
Good evening, board members. President, Mr. Williams, Superintendent Tom Tucker, Treasurer, Mr. Weber. Tonight, we have a student from Palm Elementary who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, Jayden Perez. Jayden Perez is the son of Jeanette Rivera. Jayden has two brothers, Fabian, who attends Longfellow Middle School, and Damian, who's kindergarten at Palm. Jayden's favorite subject is math, and in his spare time, he plays football. He plays center for Lorraine Pioneers, by the way, who were the league champions this year, correct? All right. After the pledge, Jayden will speak on what makes a good student. Ms. Debra Solkoff, the principal, is here tonight, and also Mr. Hernandez is here tonight to support their students. Jayden, there by stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Tucker, board members, and audience members. First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Pastoka and Mrs. Baum for selecting me to represent Palm Elementary and leading the Pledge of Allegiance, and to share my essay on what I think makes a good student. There have been many people who influenced me to become a good student, such as my teachers and, most importantly, my mom and my dad. There are many qualities that I think make a good student. The first thing that makes a good student is being on time to school every day. If you're on time for school, you'll know more about the subjects that you are learning and get better grades on tests and quizzes. Another example of being a good student is making good choices in school. If someone ever tries to get you in trouble, make the right choice and say no. This does not mean that you're being uptight. It means you're doing the right thing. Also, doing your homework is one of the most important traits of being a good student because when you do your homework, you get better grades, and also, you can be rewarded with treats, recess, and knowledge. The last thing to do in order to become a good student is to be polite to your classmates. If you're polite to your classmates, they'll be polite too, so treat them how you want to be treated. So up a friend out when they're feeling down by being nice. Modeling all of these characteristics are important. That's what I have been taught, and they work for me, so that's why I think they are needed to make a good student.
There's one thing you left off on Jayden's resume. He's one tough fetch player.
Would the family members, those who support Jayden, please stand up, please.
This time, we have recognition of visitors. Mr. Brian Corey is coming to the podium.
Thank you, board members, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Weber. Mr. Tucker asked that I report to the board on some of the positive things that are happening relative to athletics during the 2014-15 school year thus far. I'd like to start with a recap of the fall sports season. The varsity football team finished 7-4 and made the playoffs for only the second time in the history of the school district, the last time being 1984. The team scored a total of 400 points, which was the most points scored in the history of the school, well, not only the school district, but the city itself for a football season. Rashad Berry was first-team All-Ohio and the Lorraine County Defensive Lineman of the Year. He'll play at Ohio State next year. Coach McFarland was the Northeast Ohio and State of Ohio Coach of the Year, which is the highest honor any high school coach can receive. The varsity volleyball team finished second in the Lake Erie League Conference and will return the majority of their team next season. Standout three-year starter Marlena Geis was All-League and All-County. The following teams won conference championships this past fall. The Longfellow 7th Grade Volleyball Team finished 13-3 overall and won the conference. The General Johnny Wilson 8th Grade Team finished with a record of 17-1. The Lorraine High Freshmen and JV Volleyball Teams were both undefeated in conference play, and the Freshman Football Team finished 10-0, which is the most wins of a freshman football team in the history of Lorraine City Schools. One thing to note, our participation in football in grades 7 through 12 is the highest that I've seen it since I've been athletic director. We also had two athletes recently sign Division 1 letters of intent. Marlena Geis will continue her volleyball career at Coppin State University, and Devon Andrews will continue his basketball career at Kent State University. The winter sports season is just now getting underway, and one thing I'd like to talk about is some of our youth programs and some of the things that are happening and have happened over the course of the last few months relative to our elementary students. Over the past three months, we've held four basketball clinics that have included over 100 boys and girls in grades 4 through 6. We currently have 40 boys and girls in grades 4 through 6 participating in four different travel basketball teams that compete as a part of the Greater Cleveland Basketball League. They practice twice a week, and they have games on Sundays. The Lorraine Youth Wrestling Program has over 50 kids in grades K through 6. They practice a couple of times a week and also wrestle on Sundays. Last week, we actually decided to do something a little bit different. I think we may do the same thing with basketball, but we wrestled a duel with Clearview, and we moved the JV match and instead had our elementary kids wrestle before the varsity match. It allowed us to get some exposure to see exactly what's happening relative to those youth programs, but also to help to get those kids even more acclimated with the varsity program. The one great thing also is that these youth programs, that are obviously an integral, important part to the future success of our high school programs, they're not costing the district a dime. Everything is through volunteers and through money that's been donated through, whether it be individuals throughout the community or businesses. And we're looking to expand and do some other things. Right now, we're seeing a lot of success with those programs and a lot of kids really enjoying it, so we're going to be exploring some other things with those programs in the future. That's it.
In addition to that, we also, they are truly becoming student athletes also because we have, our eligibility rate is up, and I believe in the football program, we had all our students eligible the whole year, and by getting the activities with those students is huge to get those number of students in and stress the value of an athletic participation as well as academic achievement.
Mr. Tucker, is there any idea as to when golf might be brought back?
What we're waiting for is the governor's budget, which will come out in the spring, and we'll see. I wanted to bring that and volleyball, or soccer, and a number of other spring sports back, and depending on what his budget does to us in the spring, we'd fully intended to bring it back last year, but didn't quite work out, unfortunately.
Thank you.
This time, we entertain our first hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, we would welcome you to the podium at this time. Thank you, and if I may have approval of minutes dated November 17, 2014.
Motion approved.
Support motion.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Fowles.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes. Is there any old business for discussion, gentlemen? This time, we would have the report and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. There are six items on the docket this evening for approval. Item one is the number 2014 financial reports. As a footnote to that, I always tell you that the cash balance at the end of the month, at the end of November, it was $8,165,507 in the general fund. So that has to last us till March 1-ish, when the next batch of real estate tax revenues come in. Item two is the standard purchase orders requiring board approval. Item three is a standard depository fund agreement with Ray National Bank. Ours is expiring December 31st, so we'll get a new five-year one starting January 1st, standard procedure by Ohio Revised Code. Item four is a, as we have done in the past, we have to approve certain things for the Lorraine Public Library, and in November, they approved Gerolyn Tomas as a trustee for a period of January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2021, so it requires our board approval for that. Item five is the annual OSB 2015 Legal Assistance Fund. We can tap into that fund, and it's a very inexpensive way to get some legal advice. And item six are donations. So with the board's approval, I would recommend items 1 through 6 for approval.
Motion to approve treasurer's items 1 through 6.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Fowles.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes.
And item seven is just FYI, I put on there next year's 2015 levy dates, just as FYI for everybody, you can see all four of them on your packet there, in case we want to entertain those thoughts later on or even, we'll see how that goes into 2016. So we have renewal coming up in 2016, calendar 2016, as that five-year levy expires. We have to start thinking about those issues, not today, but just start thinking about them. And that's all I have.
Thank you. This time, we have the report and recommendations of the superintendent. Mr. Tucker.
A quick report. Admiral King, we're still drilling, and it's down quite a ways now, and our plans right now are to return to that building after break for the students. There'll be a press release, so don't ask me any questions now. I won't answer any. You'll get a press release tomorrow, and that's our intent at this time, and we'll have the same process. We'll have a packing up of materials, and we'll transform over break, and then we'll have an open house for the public if they want to come in, and then it'll be open to the teachers over break if they'd like to stop in. And that is, as of today, that is our intent, to return on January. I think you say that, because we had due the last time, January 5th, so, but we're pretty confident now. You'll also see another crane. They'll be digging down at the end of Seventh Court. They found another gas well in that area, which is a little bit stronger than ours. Ours was very, very small, but we'll be bringing just more updates on that. Recommendations.
Excuse me.
Yes.
You have ruled out my concerns on ghosts.
We don't know. There may be. I think we got them out since we cut the roof off.
Okay, all right.
And the other thing, well, you know, we were looking at that, and they tailed that back so cleanly, thought maybe we could have a dome kind of like Dallas.
It's all going in the paper.
You know, I mean, just put a retractable roof over there. You know.
You'll pay for that?
Jim, the Jim Smith Fund.
Yeah, right.
Okay, recommendations of the superintendent. Item one is, it's our approval of certified staff retirements. There's four more, and we're up to approximately 33 at this time. Number two, approval of support staff resignation. There's just more as listed. Number three, considerable approval of certified staff appointments. Those are two substitutes. Item four, approval of administrative staff appointments, and those are just our replacement, those are replacement social workers, and also some grant-funded social worker, and also another substitute administrator. Number five, consider approval of leave of absences is listed. These are the routine leave of absences we have. Number six, approval of supplemental contracts, and we're starting into the basketball, the junior high basketball season for those. And number seven, approval of supplemental contracts for non-certified staff. Those are also the winter sports. So I ask for approval of subject items number 1 through item 7.
Motion to approve items 1 through 7.
Support motion.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Fowles.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
The Operations Matters G, approval of a contract with Tracy Vegas. This is for some of our sports items. Approval of a contract with Clearview, and item 3 is Alaria High, Avon High, and Avon Lakes. What those are, is there's tournaments, and the money that they make, they just split them up between the schools, is the way that works, as opposed to whoever, if we go back and forth to all these schools, and what they don't want to do is if they have to have a tournament, they have to cancel it one year because of the snow. That way, everybody gets equal money every year as it works out. Four, our contract with Carlos Crespo. This is the DJ Services. This is out of their fund for, oh, I believe this is, it's a student activity, but I'm not sure which student activity it is. Approval of a contract with Marcy Sargent, a PhD. This is grant-funded for us. It's for our preschool. Consider, six, considerable approval of a contract for Side Effects. This is for Scoreboard that we're going to be replacing, which will be the first for overtime as sponsorships. Seven, considering the renewal of the contract with Lorraine Community College, and this is part of our gear up, and that is also a part of the gear up grant for the board. Eight, consider approval of a contract with Measurement. This is part of the Silver and Straw More Race of the Top Expenditures for Professional Development. Consider approval of a contract with Joe Apolito. This has to do with an external evaluation of our alternative grants. We're required as part of that grant to have an evaluation of that, and that's included in that grant. Consider of approval 10 and 11 with Becky Smith and Mary No Wiki. This is part of Title 1 to provide some intervention for our students. And number 12, consider approval of a resolution to purchase a food service truck. Some of those are getting hundreds of thousands of miles, and it's just time to repurchase that, and they were quote-solicited by law, and we're going to do. So approval of matters 1 through 12, Operation Matters 1 through 12.
Motion to approve Operation Matters 1 through 12.
Support.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Fowles.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
That concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Is there any new business for discussion, gentlemen? The item that we have is consider setting dates and time for organizational meeting, tax budget meeting, and naming the president pro tem of the organizational meeting.
As Mr. Smith said before, that's the first day we come back off of vacation, so we might want to consider pushing, maybe pushing it back a week. I mean, unless the superintendent thinks she'll be ready by then.
There'll be nobody, because they like to be here with the students here, a lot of my staff tries to get their time in those weeks, which means there'll be very little business for you to act upon over the organization meeting. I mean, if you want that date, we'll be ready.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so then, what's the next Monday? The 12th?
12th. Doesn't have to be on a Monday, but it can be on the 12th.
It has to be the 15th or sooner.
By, yes, by law, it has to be during the first 15 days of January.
So the 12th, we're saying, is that reasonable for everyone?
The 12th is okay with me.
Yep, fine.
So then, we will set the date, recommendations, set the date and time for the organizational meeting to be Monday, January 12th. Are we going to start earlier?
I would suggest that we do.
What's our normal protocol?
Six or 5:30. 5:30?
5:30.
5:30?
Because that should get us to regular time at 6:30, if we work through all the others, so.
And then, the naming of president pro tem.
I think you did a pretty good job so far. I think that I would recommend you for one more month.
Really?
No, no, it's about 10 minutes.
Okay, no, 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 I meant, yeah, yeah.
Don't get his head up there.
Okay. Okay, I could recommend you for 10 minutes.
Well, you know, I got to ask, that costs renegotiating my contract. Oh, don't have one. Okay, so...
Support. Well, you don't need a support for a nomination, I don't think. Anyway, I was supported.
Why, thank you. So we need to vote on all of this now?
So we'll just do, so it's the org meeting at 5:30 PM on Monday, January 12, 2015. The regular meeting will follow, immediately follow that, and the tax budget meeting will be, I'll put it in the same package of dates in there. That's where the tax budget has to be done. So we have the org meeting, tax budget meeting, and the regular meeting to follow that. And the president pro tem is Mr. Williams, so motion and second in the vote.
I'll make a motion.
I already did.
Oh, you did second.
I seconded it.
You did?
Yeah.
We need to move.
Well, then I don't have to do anything.
Well, you did.
Bill did.
Jim seconded, okay.
Discussion over.
Okay. Discussion.
Vote.
Vote.
Do it again.
Mr. Smith, or Mrs. Sturgill.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
What?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
You could sell this, you know, for reality TV, Terry. You go right on, you know.
Make a motion again.
Replace the pawn brokers, whatever the names are.
Do we have community reports or requests from board members?
I just want to remind everyone who's interested that on Thursday evening at 5:00 PM in this room, the bond issue oversight committee will meet for their last meeting of 2014. The member of the commission will be updated on all phases of the project. Just, this has yet to be approved by the, this is not approved official number, but we have about 52, a little over $52 million left in the fund. That would be for the primary finishing of the high school, any demolitions that are required. There's about $9.2 million in interest that we have been able to earn, but almost $5 million of that has been encumbered for the high school. That would be the auditorium and the additional student space. If that's approved by the commission on Thursday, then those numbers will be official. So we're winding down.
Thank you. Any other requests, gentlemen?
No, we're good.
I just also, if I might, congratulate Tom and Dale and especially their staff, Sherry and Elena, for making this first board docs meeting pretty much seamless. Sherry, I didn't know that you were magic, but you keep moving my agenda, I understand. And I kept looking, and it was moving.
Thank you for that. I noticed that.
Now, if you can develop a mute button.
For him, yeah. She's a steel man. Don't you mess with her. Pioneer.
Okay. I thought I would get that little big in before I lose my spot. Second hearing of the public. We would welcome anyone to come.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Eugene Rice, 1034 MLK Boulevard, 21st Street, and representing the NAACP. I have just finished 20 years here. I was hoping to retire, but if you saw the paper.
Yep.
You guys are going to have my beautiful, lovely self for another two years at least. You know, don't applaud, I know.
Congratulations.
No, you guys know that I'm serious when it comes to education, especially at Lorraine City Schools. I do not like to hear anyone talk about our school system because I feel like that goes for teachers, administrators, whatever. If you say something bad about Lorraine School, then I'm going to get busy trying to get you out of here because you're not helping us at all when you talk about Lorraine City Schools. Okay, I have some concerns and some questions. You might want to get your pencils and papers out. I've gotten calls from my educational party, from the national, and they asked us to ask for percentages as to how many black minority students attend Lorraine City Schools, as well as how many educators and administrators are employed in Lorraine City Schools. So I need that. I'll give you some time during Christmas if you...
All that information, if you just give it to me, we can pull that up within 15 minutes and give it to you in a form, no problem. We have all that collected already.
All right, thank you. Okay, I have some questions. I visit several of our elementary schools, particularly on the west side. Why are the principals doing lunchroom duties? That kind of concerned me. Don't we employ lunchroom aides anymore? And I'm going to tell you two buildings that I attended, and it's not hearsay, I was present.
Answer it.
Yes, Garfield is one that I attended, and Hawthorne was another one that I attended. These schools are full, full of students.
The assistant principals doing it, but we had to cut that. And we do have lunchroom aides that are there, but a lot of times, they have, they don't stay very long, they've been quitting because it's very difficult, or they don't want to work part-time. Do you know if anybody would love to work? Please send them our way. We'll hire them tomorrow.
Thank you on that question. Okay, since it hit the paper about double dipping, my phone's been busy, and yours truly, I frown at double dipping because you know why I frown at it, especially if you've already had that position of whatever you've done and it has not moved forward, why would I want you back? Now, superintendent, now you know I'm direct. I have smiled. You have done some things that I like. You did put a lot of our black and minority principals back in the buildings. That's amen for that. But I'm still not quite happy because the percentage, and you know, our agreements, yes, and you know the agreement.
Till the retirements go, I can't replace people that are here because of the layoffs. We talked about that at length.
Yeah, but you know, I'm not happy until we get that percentage back up. Supposed to be 20%.
It would be great, and this is my opportunity this year, and all assistance you can give us to recruit those people. We have attended three minority job fairs, and we are hitting all the black colleges and a lot of Hispanic colleges to make sure that we hire those folks. It's very difficult, and the assistance you can give us would be terrific.
Okay, because I've had names and complaints, and people said they have tried to submit their application, I have submitted it, and they were not.
We haven't hired hardly anybody here in two years. We've hired very, very few, so this is the opportunity. And once again, they still have to have the licensure and the credentials and everything that is needed.
Okay, you answered me. Now, you know, you're going to see me quite frequent because I'm really concerned about that gap next year, all those positions.
So are we, so am I. You know that.
Well, I don't joke when it comes to that because...
I don't either.
My question is, when I attend the schools, I even told Jim, I said, where are all the Caucasian kids on the west side? Because when I attend all the schools on this side of town, they're all brown. And that bothers me, and they're all brown, and like, Garfield don't even have a black educator in that building except the principal. That's the only thing.
If they've been here 25, 30 years of teaching, we, most of our teachers, our average tenure of teacher is about 25 years, so they've been here a long time. We have laid off probably 300 to 400 teachers over the last 10 years, and...
And you know what's happening?
Very, very bad situation.
They're being replaced by Caucasians. When our black teachers retire, they get that void, it's filled by Caucasians.
Actually, we haven't replaced many because the current teachers have been in positions is what's occurred. I can only speak for the hiring of the last two years.
Yes, because I was just going, okay, debate you on that.
And you know what I've done and gone after on a regular basis.
Okay, now, you know, I got a good memory.
Because look at my administrators, and look at the numbers and what I've done in administration, and we haven't had the opportunity of teaching.
All right. Everybody witnessed that, and maybe the next few times I visit you, I'll smile even more.
Just help me out because I also have a Hispanic community also.
Yes, and you don't have one as an administrator.
Actually, I've got three or four.
Over here, Charleston? Who? I must have missed it. Who was it?
You said principals. You said administrators.
No, no, I said administrator, I mean, headquarters.
Well, remember, we eliminated about 35 administrators out of this building.
Okay, but I'm aware that there's not one in this building.
There actually is.
Who is it? Don't know her. Don't know her.
There's three or four.
And also, we are frowning at so many outside employees, especially the double dippers.
I've got.
Let the money maintain here and give our young folks an opportunity to get employed in Lorraine City Schools. We got a lot of kids here have college degrees, and they're not employed. They can't get employed here, they gotta leave the city.
We're also under an academic distress commission, where I have to hire the people that have the experience, and unfortunately, I haven't been in the position where I can bring people into trade at this point. That's something that's on the horizon, but until we get the commission to give us the good graces, I'm kind of stuck at this juncture.
All right. I owe each other. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, we appreciate you, Mr. Tucker, for responding. Generally, our protocol is we don't respond to questions because we don't want to give misinformation, but we're happy that those, some of those things could have been addressed, and I'm sure they will get more information to you.
And I didn't get personal either. I'll do that when we meet.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. As such, other concerns.
There always is, and we manage them as best we can.
Are there any additional folks who would like to address this, please?
Jacqueline Rogers, 5419 Victoria, Lorraine, Ohio. I've been gone for quite a while. My husband passed a while back, so I've taken care of him for quite a while. Jean mentioned to me about the double dipping, and I remember a couple of years ago, I'm sure you guys read it too, it was on the front page of the PD, huge, huge article about double dipping, the top two, obviously, one of them was the school systems. And I know our governor definitely does not believe in double dipping. And I mentioned that to Jean, I can always get that article, because actually, I work in Cleveland, I can get the article from the PD, because I work there. But I'm sure you've already read it, because it was a huge, it was the full page, just about, I don't know if that's like $500 or $600 or what. But the main thing is, she is right. I mentioned to her a couple of years ago, you were talking about two years ago, my son's undergrad was at UT, and then he went to OU for grad. And he mentioned to me about a couple of the students that actually went to Lorraine City Schools, graduated from Lorraine City School, were certified, they went to UT, they went to OU, they went to Bowling Green, all these great schools in Ohio. You can't get experience until you actually work, but they did have all of the other education and certifications. None of them were hired, they end up going to charter schools within the county and outside of the county. So, it did not happen. And I remember telling my son about it, he says, Mom, he says, I don't know, they put in applications, blah, 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 nothing happened. Now, one, excuse me, one of the teachers, after about three years, she did get hired, but I'm assuming that was because she worked at a charter school first. But these are students that actually from Lorraine, grew up in Lorraine, or either was, they were born in Lorraine, went to high school in either Admiral King or Southview, went to college and could not get a job in Lorraine City Schools. And two of them are white. And so, when you're talking about whatever it is, you're not even, who's looking at these applications? And do you always have to be, I mean, if that's the case, I would never be a nurse, if I, if they had to wait until I got experience. Somebody had to say, you know, we're gonna hire her. Somebody has, just like a doctor, a lawyer, somebody has to give you the experience. Now, I don't know all the ins and outs of Lorraine City Schools as far as qualifications other than the masters or bachelors and the certification to teach, but if you're waiting for somebody to get years of experience, I'm not really sure where that's going. But I do want to make that comment, because, and my son says, Mom, he says, I know a bunch of people that are kids, something kills them kids, they're not, they're in their 20s now, that he said they should have gotten hired. And, you know, one or two went to Avon, and they didn't even have a problem with.
We've hired hardly anybody. We've got applicants.
Well, no, this was when you were hiring. This was when you were hiring. This was like, what, three years ago? Oh, you're lucky. Well, whoever was here, the people on the board were here. I know everybody, but kind of, you're still here from before, but you look a little different. I'm sure I do too.
I agree.
But everybody pretty much is here, except for right here. But everyone else is the same. But I guess what I wanted to say was, I'm gonna try to get that article from the PD, I know they're out off of 90, but I have a couple of friends, and I'm sure they can, I'd like to get a copy of one of the originals, so you can see a full page instead of a, you know, an email or something like that. But as far as to get it back to the issue at hand, the double dipping, you know, it really needs to stop. And it's not just Jean, it's everybody in the state of Ohio. We have so many young people that are talented and educated, we need to stop. And so, you know, you're always putting on levees, and you're always, there's always a change of the guard, it's time, let these young people have a chance. And the ones that are 20 years and up, then move them up, so that the younger ones can take their place. But you have got to stop. You know, if you look on the stats for Ohio, we're notorious in Lorraine County, especially Lorraine City. It's just got to stop. So, that's all I want to say, and I will, because I'm gonna start working with Jean again, now that my husband is deceased, and so I can get any of your information that she needs from wherever. And I know they had some issues before in the Cleveland area, Cleveland City Schools concerning double dipping, and the universities that used to have, they've pretty much toned it down, some of them have actually stopped. And so, we need to think about it and then respond to it, and then do something.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board?
We will be going into executive session, and I would normally reserve comment, but part of our executive session is the board is, and hopefully, legal counsel will be here, discussing protocols in our process around retire, rehire. So, I will, and the board may chime in with some comments. There are many discussions about retire, rehire. There are many opinions, and as it relates to Mr. Tucker, the only thing that's been presented about retire, rehire for any discussion is as it relates to the superintendent of this district. That is because, based on the STRS dynamics, he has announced publicly that he will retire.
He didn't say that. He said he intended to.
He intended to retire, yes. And so, that's, if, and so, based on that dynamic, we can have some general discussion, because it's not, it's not something that we're hiding, it's not something we're hiding in. The board has made no decision on what it's doing in the future. However, I will say this, when the board hired Mr. Tucker, when the board did its deliberation on its new superintendent, we, with our community and our community forums, discussed two controversial pieces. One was the retire, rehire, the other was the superintendent's residency in the district. And we got specific feedback from community members on that. If you remember the finalists, one of the finalists in our superintendent search was retired already. One of the other finalists, I believe, retired two years ago. And we knew when we hired Mr. Tucker, that within the next three years, based on these changes, we expected a retirement. So, anyone who thinks that we're caught off guard, or that we haven't discussed this, the board has made no decision moving forward, but we have discussed this, and we discussed this with the community. So, you know, it's not, we didn't just get here and say, oh, my goodness, where are we? We had discussions about this, and we will continue to have discussions about it. We are very satisfied with the work of the superintendent. I don't think we can characterize a new hire, we would not be having a new hire in the superintendent position. These are uniquely different.
No, 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 no. Wait, wait, wait. When I say new hire, I'm talking about a new, a new job person.
I sold my intelligence for saying that.
No, no, no. Listen, I'm making my comments now, you made yours, these are mine.
But that wasn't right.
Right, so, so what I'm saying is, when it comes to retire, rehire, all of us have opinions on it, I have opinions on it, I am not the, excuse me, ma'am.
That's terrible, what you said.
If you'll let me finish. So, when it comes to the superintendent position, we have different positions, we look at differently.
Well, when you say we, that's not correct.
People, people look at the gym.
Each person does.
Listen, you will be able to have your comments on yourself, okay? This is.
Well, I don't want, let me just say.
I am not speaking for the board.
This board has never discussed the rehire of Mr. Tucker.
We have not.
Period.
We have not.
His contract from 2012.
Is up this year.
Is up on June or July 31st. His contract clearly states that because of changes in the STRS, he can retire on or about June 30th, 2015, and should he desire to be considered for reemployment. The board has agreed to at least discuss that possibility, but that's all the board has agreed to. Now, the law is very clear on this, and Mr. Tucker probably knows it better than any of us. If we were to reemploy Mr. Tucker, number one, there has to be a public classified announcement published in both papers at least 60 days in advance of reemployment. And in 15, between 15 and 30 days before reemployment, there must be a public meeting in which public comment will be taken to fully explain and get the public's reaction. That all has to precede any agreement to reemploy Mr. Tucker. Okay? So, nothing is gonna be hidden. Negotiations of a contract, that's always subject for executive session, pays and benefits. But everything will be made public before the board votes. You folks will not be let out, the law would not allow us to do that. It's very clear in Ohio Revised Code, the process that has to be followed, and we will follow it.
And all of this, again, is triggered because of an announcement of a protocol that Mr. Tucker had to follow. So, again, we don't want people to be alarmed, but don't think that we're trying to do secretive things either. This is a, it's, we've been transparent when we started the process, we used a committee of citizens in the search process. So, and we will continue to follow the protocols as described by the Ohio Revised Code. And again, no decisions have been made, but again, we are not in a place that we didn't know we wouldn't be, and that's accurate. Please, Mr. Tucker.
The rules change, so that's why I retire it, otherwise I wouldn't be, but I'm not gonna put my family for less money, that's not gonna happen. If you don't want me back, that's fine, just remember that a good third, I think, of the legislators are retire, rehire, and the state superintendent that the governor appointed is a retire, rehire. Just that it's, while he says that, a lot of his staff is also retire, rehire. So, and it has to do not with people wanting to, and you don't double dip, actually, it won't haunt this school district anymore. I paid into my retirement, and I will be getting my money back that I paid in, and teachers do too. I mean, we all do, we all do for a long time, we're not part of STRS. So, the district or any government entity does not pay your retirement and pay yourself here. But that's totally not up to me, and if I'm not back, that's fine, if I am back, that's fine too. I've done, I think, some pretty good work here with some pretty good people, I spent my whole career with, which I like a lot, and I think we've made a difference for kids.
Actually, and I speak only for myself, I appreciate Mr. Tucker's letter, because he could have not said anything until June. Now, we have time to do it the right way. Sinnermost will be our students and the people living in the school district. That's my number one concern, I can't speak for the others, but I believe it's theirs too. But Tom did not have to make that, and I was surprised, this early, because this gives us the time.
Do whatever you choose to do.
To do whatever we choose to do, so. But I assure you, it will not be done, you will know, my, because we have to put things in the paper and have a meeting, that's the law.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
We're going into executive session. Is it personnel? That's okay.
One, and also.
Is it A2, maybe? Is that one on? A2?
Well, you've got A2, you've got C.
A and D, maybe.
And C.
Can you put that up, the various reasons?
Yep.
Yep. A2, C, and D, right?
Yep.
A2, C, and D. Yep.
Oh, and.
Okay. No, it's not on the board, that's what I was asking. Eight? Eight. Terry? Okay.
A2, C, D, and eight.
It's not on the screen. A2. The four reasons.
You need M, M. Section M up there. C, D, and eight.
Go.
You're further, you need to go one back, you need to go back.
You gotta go back.
On that, one item.
Okay. I got a crap right here. Okay.
So, we need a motion to go into executive session for A2, C, D, and eight.
No, hang on, hang on. A, and Tom, A2 employment, A8 investigation?
Oop, I'm not sorry, not investigation.
No, okay.
It is two.
A2.
And C. I'm sorry, A2 and C.
A2, how about D?
And D, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's A2 employment.
Yeah, you may want to read them.
C, D, and eight.
Mm-hmm.
You guys keep saying eight, what is the eight?
A dash two.
A dash two.
Consider the one or more applicable, Jeff Marks.
Okay. A2, C.
And.
And D. D isn't David, yeah, okay.
So, may I have a motion to go into executive session for A2, C, and D?
Correct. So, move. Support.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Sturgill?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker, are we expected to make any decisions tonight?
No, 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 no decisions.
So, we will use this room for executive session, there will be no decisions made after we come out of executive session, so there will be no more business conducted after the.
If you're welcome to wait, we'll put some chairs in the hall. 7:18. 7:18.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.
To purchase a high-quality copy of the program you just viewed, please call Lorraine City Schools Television at 282-8400.
One of my biggest passions in life is animals. That's why I've worked with Morris Animal Foundation for over 40 years. Morris Animal Foundation is a world leader in helping animals live longer, healthier lives. You can too. Just show your support at morrisanimalfoundation.org.
To help cats, dogs, horses, and wildlife live healthier lives, visit morrisanimalfoundation.org, where we are advancing science that will create a healthier tomorrow for animals.
We could have a roll call to draw the meeting to order, Mr. Weber, please.
Mr. Damacchia?
Yes.
Mr. Phallus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
And Mr. Williams?
Here. This time, we would have the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Hall, Dr. Hall.
Superintendent Mr. Tucker, Treasurer Mr. Weber, Board President Mr. Williams, and distinguished board members, tonight, we have a student from Lorraine High School who will lead a pledge of allegiance, Jada Curry. Jada is the daughter of Mrs. Curry and also stepfather of Mr. Anderson. She has nine siblings who reside in Atlanta, Georgia. She is a member of the JROTC program and is also a member of the Girl of Soul, sponsored by Liz Ferraro. She is also running the anti-bullying campaign for Lorraine High School. After the pledge, she will speak on anti-bullying and take, and it takes, take a stand program. Mr. Tim Jama, Assistant Principal of Lorraine High School, is here tonight to support a student. Thank you.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jada Scott Curry.
I would first like to thank Dr. Sturgill for allowing me to speak this evening. I am 15 years old. I am in the 10th grade. During my middle school years, I was a victim of school bullying. On November 3rd, 2014, I decided I wanted to work with students in lower-grade levels to help them cope with bullying. As I got older, I started to realize the patterns of the victims and the bullies. I can tell and understand what the bullies go through in their personal life. I started working with the annex on November 14th till November- till November 21st. I started making multiple plans with over 30 students. Throughout the week of November 17th till November 21st, my mother and I made over 200 red ribbons. The red represented stop bullying. I passed most of the ri- the red ribbons out to Credit Recovery Academy and the rest to Lorraine High Annex. I have plans to show clips of the movie Camp Harlow. In Camp Harlow, on the brink- on the brink of a family crisis, Alex, a teenage bully, is asked to attend a summer camp by a young man she is interested in. She goes to the camp expecting one thing, only to find out this is the last place she wants to be, a Christian camp. Thrown into a group of people she has never met, she is determined to shut out and wer- shut out the world and to continue to be rude and mean to others. I have told my story to 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders at Credit Recovery Academy and Lorraine High Annex. Just by telling my stor- my story to my older peers, it makes me feel free. In order for me to work with other victims, I have to gain their trust. I have been through it all. The main reason I love working with kids younger than I am, I understand them and I am closer to their problems. Before I conclude, I would like to thank the following adults that have encouraged me to this anti-bullying program. My mother, Stetisa Curry, because she helped me with all of my ideas and supporting me. My father, Jason Anderson, for helping my mother support me and being there for me. My three mentors, Liz Ferrero, who could not make it this evening. She has talked to me and have understood, and I have understood her story. Mike Ferrer, for working with so many kids in the program- in the Lorraine County Urban League program. And Jessica Castro, who has helped Mike Ferrer run the program and also working with over 20 students. Thank you for allowing me to come here this evening. (APPLAUSE).
Tonight, I would like to recognize her parents as well. Please stand. I'd like to thank you for doing a phenomenal job and blessing us with Jada in our school system, and she's been doing a great job with us. And she forgot to tell you also that she's a member of our Titan College program as well, and she's earned some college credit last year as well through our- our avid program last year. So, thank you. Is there a certificate from the Board here?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Turn it back over to Mr. Williams.
This time, we move forward with the nomination and election of the President, and I would like to personally take the opportunity to open the floor for nominations. And first, I would like to nominate Mr. Tony Damachia for President.
Do we need a second?
Do we- do we need seconds for this?
No, you just nominate, and then you vote.
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah.
Will the nominations be closed?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we vote for the closing?
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Nominations are closed.
May we not have a roll call? Vote for the President?
Mr. Damachia votes for...
Mr. Damachia. Is there somebody else?
Mr. Fowles votes for?
Mr. Damachia.
Mr. Smith doesn't hear. Mr. Sturgill votes for?
Mr. Damachia.
Mr. Williams votes for?
Mr. Damachia. Yeah? Freedom!
Declaration of President, the Board has approved Mr. Damachia as President of the Board of Education for 2015 calendar year. I must admit, it's the oath of office to our new President.
Where's the copy? There are copies. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Board President of the Board of Education of the Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
I do, sir.
So, Mr. Damachia, would you like to... Do I have to keep doing this, or can I just pass my gavel?
Pass the gavel, yeah.
You want to just trade seats real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah. I want you to sit right here.
In the middle of the mix. In the middle of the mix.
You're just so bad. Get out of the seat.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Vice President?
I motion that we nominate- I would like to nominate Bill Sturgill for Vice President.
Motion that nominations be closed. Second.
Can I second that? Oh, okay. Roll call.
Nominations to be closed. Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
And Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Okay. Vote on the Vice Presidency. Mr. Damachia votes for?
Mr. Sturgill.
Mr. Fowles votes for?
Mr. Sturgill.
Mr. Sturgill votes for?
Mr. Sturgill.
And Mr. Williams votes for?
Mr. Sturgill.
The Board has approved Mr. William Sturgill as Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2015 calendar year. Mr. Sturgill?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Board Vice President of the Board of Education of the Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
I do, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on number six.
Number six, fixing the date and time of regular Board of Education meeting. If there are no objections, I would like to keep it as our regular scheduled meeting as it currently is on Mondays at 6:30, the first and third Mondays of every month.
Well, just as a footnote to this, February 16th is a Monday. It's a holiday. And September 7th is Labor Day, Monday. Let's keep it in the back of our minds. Okay? So, we need a... I'm sorry, you want a motion second to go do that, right?
You need a motion? I make that motion that we meet on the first and third Mondays of the month.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
First and third Mondays. Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes. The next several items, 7 through 15, are pretty procedural. We go through them every single year, and I would like to see if we can get a motion to approve items 7 through 15.
Motion to approve items 7 through 15.
Support motion. Discussion? Roll call.
Item 7 through 15. Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes. Item 16, Bond Issue Oversight Committee. Can you get a motion for item 16.01?
Motion that we reappoint the Bond Oversight Committee members as slated?
Support motion. Discussion? Roll call.
Item 7 through 15. Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes. Item 16, Bond Issue Oversight Committee. Can you get a motion for item 16.01?
Motion that we reappoint the Bond Oversight Committee members as slated?
Support motion. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes. Yep. And if there are no objections, I would like to keep the committee appointments as they have already previously been assigned. And I'll name those. Those committees are Athletic Committee, Tony Damachia and Bill Sturgill; Bond Issue Oversight Committee, James Smith, Mitchell Fowles; Business Advisory Committee, Mitchell Fowles and James Smith; Endowment Committee, Timothy Williams; Evaluation Committee, James Smith and Timothy Williams; Facilities Committee, Bill Sturgill and Tony Damachia; Legislative Liaison, James Smith and Timothy Williams; Ohio Urban Schools Initiative, Bill Sturgill is a delegate, Tony Damachia is an alternate; Policy Committee, Bill Sturgill, Timothy Williams; and Strategic Plan Committee, Mitchell Fowles, Tony Damachia.
Motion that we accept the slate of officers or of committees as stated?
Support motion. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Just before we do it, can we just go a titch slower? I want to just- I want to just make sure I got them all. I'm just kidding. So, the athletic is Mr. Damachia, Mr. Sturgill.
Correct.
The bond issue oversight is Mr. Smith, Mr. Fowles.
Correct.
I missed the business advisory.
Mitchell Fowles and James Smith.
Do we do the endowment?
Timothy Williams.
Evaluation Committee?
James Smith, Timothy Williams.
Facilities?
Bill Sturgill and myself.
Legislative Liaison was Mr. Smith and Mr. Williams?
Correct.
Urban Schools was Mr.- was Bill Sturgill and Tony Damachia?
Correct.
Policy, Mr. Sturgill and Mr. Williams?
Correct.
Strategic Plan was Mr. Fowles, Mr. Damachia?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr.- okay, roll call is Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes. Need a motion to adjourn our organizational meeting? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
5:59.
I would like to then do a roll call for our regular scheduled meeting.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith. Okay.
I got it.
We don't have any visitors.
So, we are...
Hearing the public.
First hearing of the public. No takers. I need approval of the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting on December 15th, 2014. Motion to approve the minutes from our meeting December 15th, 2014.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Damachia?
Yes. Is there any old business?
Uh, miss- uh, 7.01, the approval of the tax budget.
Not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Hey, you want this seat? No business tonight. Fantastic. Need a report and recommendation to the Treasurer?
Standard procedure is the tax budget, which is actually next year's operating budget, which is tied to the 5-year forecast. Nothing that's changed since October forecast. So, the for- the tax budget shows all the funds in the school district, not just the general fund, and Lorraine County requires this procedure, and it's pretty, um, it's pretty standard stuff. Item 7.02 is a couple donations on the agenda, so I recommend items 7.01 and 7.02.
Okay, motion to approve item 7? Motion to approve items 701 and 702. Second.
Okay, hold on, we have a technical issue?
Blue.
Want to keep going?
We got ours.
Yeah, they got their paper.
Okay, we'll keep going. Okay. Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes. And a report and recommendations, Superintendent?
The month of January is School Board Recognition Month, so what I'd like to do is is present to you, in a sense, a sincere appreciation from the example of our leadership and service to public schools. First presented to Tony Damachia on behalf of Ohio School Boards. Bill Sturgill?
Next time.
Thank you. Okay, recommendations, the Superintendent, 8.01, 8.02, retirements is listed, 8.03, staff appointments, there are, we are replacing some people that are coming back or that are retiring mid-year, and also, of course, substitutes, which we put on everyone. 8.04, support staff, there's some folks that were adding some substitutes and also some people that are- that have retired and moved into new positions. 8.05, leave of absences is listed. 8.06, these are the extra classes of teachers that teach the extra class during their conference period. 8.07, the payment schedules for the winter and spring production workers, like we do in the fall. 8.08, the payment schedules, there's no change on those, they're the same as they've been. 8.09, the approval of our TV20 announcements, and I'm sure more people are watching that today than before. And 810, the approval of the athletic production worker for a hire. So, I ask for approval of matters 8.01 through 8.10.
Motion to approve items 8.01 through 8.10.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
8.01 to 8.10, Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Fowles?
Yes.
And Mr. Damachia?
Yes.
Approval of recommendations, operation matters, 9.01, this is an adjustment, this is on a per pupil basis, so you get the contract upfront, and depending on how many students are involved, we have to make the adjustment afterwards. 9.02, this is for the website platform, which you have a lot of our sports thing now will flow from there into our website. Brian Corey's been working on this for quite a while, so this will give the public a lot more information on our- on our sports programs. 9.03, PSI for services rendered, this is an auxiliary service that has- that's part of St. Anthony's, not our school. 9.04 is security for the dance, and 9.05 is security for the dance for physical dance. So, as for approvals of matters, 9.01 through 9.05.
Motion to approve items 9.01 to 9.05.
I've got a question. I've got a question on 9.02.
Discussion?
Did you see that?
Not yet. Need a second. Support motion.
Okay.
Discussion.
Thanks. On 9.02, does that... When you say, where does it go to, Tom? It goes to our website?
It will be linked to our website.
Link to our website? I mean, it's not on Channel 20, won't be running?
I don't believe so. What... Jeff has a lot of detail on this.
It's a, if I could, it's a better graphics, it's a whole new webpage that's used throughout the whole state, and actually, it just really, and it links all of the games.
Times.
Times, and it just, the quality is really nice, and it's strictly for our most, if you look at like Ohio State's website, things like that, it'll list all the games, times, everything going, who they're playing, information about them. It's just a very up-to-date type of website for athletics.
Okay.
And the way it'll work is when...
Sure, for athletics.
Yeah, when you go on our website and click on our website stories, it'll send you there.
Okay.
Roll call.
Items 9.01, 9.05, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Fallus?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia?
Yes.
10 other matters, 10.01, the final section J of the manual, the policy manual, it's now up to date. Now, it'll just be from here on out. It's been a year and a half project. From here on out, it's just the updates, it's legislative changeup. And 10.02, the resolution for School Board Recognition Month, which we did. So, matters 10.01, 10.02.
Motion to approve items 10.01, 10.02.
Support. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Fallus?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. New business. Committee reports or requests from board members?
I would like to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues for allowing me to serve in the capacity as chair or president for the last number of years. It was an honor and a pleasure, and I'm very excited about Mr. Damacchia resuming the reign, and Bill, of course, is always in there doing his thing. So, again, thank you for the support and the confidence, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership.
You're most welcome.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, sir.
Second hearing of the public.[1646.91]